And I'm calling the regional school committee to order. And note, we're being recorded. Thank you CCTV.
I request that the Chair of the Concord School Committee call for the seating of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee and for the election of officers for the Concord-Carlyle School Committee. Other appointments can be made at that time if committees have worked out assignments. Appointments that require a vote, in addition to the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee, are the appointment of the Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer for the region.
Okay, so we'll do the seating of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee members. Motion for, please, for the move need to be made to recognize Joanna Boynton, Wallace Johnson, Heather Baut, Robert Grau, and Court Booth as Concord members, and Mary Storrs and Christine Lear as Carlyle members of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee. So, any discussion? Thank you and welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome Christine. We're glad to have you.
Yes, thank you. And now we will move to the election of the Officers of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee. Nominations will be accepted and voted on for the Chair of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee. So I take a motion for any...
I would like to move to nominate Robert Grau as Chair of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee.
Any other nominations? Comments?
I'll just comment quickly that Bob has been Vice Chair, obviously, for the past year. I feel like he's done a great job and obviously has taken over for the past few weeks in Dan's absence, and I feel like we're already in good hands and have full confidence in him.
Any others?
I will echo that.
Likewise, I say, thinking as Bob as Chair is very, very organized and thorough, and I think he's geared up to do an excellent job. I appreciate all the work that the committee should be getting voted into.
Let's see how this goes.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, congratulations Bob.
Thank you very much.
Bob, I'll let you take over.
Okay, and so now we are looking for...
Right down this list. What do you have?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you didn't have it.
As well.
Like I said, it's with our...
Looking for a motion to elect the Vice Chair of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee.
So I move to nominate Mary Storrs as Vice Chair of the Concord-Carlyle School Committee, please.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, I was just gonna say one thing. As a longstanding member of both committees in Carlyle and on this region, and having done years of work and doing the work of the Calendar Committee, this Policy Subcommittee, the Campus Advisory Committees, Mary, she's obviously put in a tremendous amount of time in an earnest and committed and dedicated way, and I think we'll most appreciate all the work you do, especially behind the scenes outside of this meeting, and really appreciate that you're still here and that you help guide us along the way.
Thank you.
I can only second what Joanna said. I've gotten to know Mary pretty well in our 10 or 12 meetings for the Campus Advisory Committee and many more meetings in the Policy Subcommittee. And so I think she adds a very important factor and approach to policy writing and her critical thinking in terms of organizing subcommittees, et cetera, is much appreciated. She was very helpful to me in writing and finalizing the charge for the Campus Advisory Committee about nine months to a year ago, so very much looking forward to working with you and the rest of the crew here, including Walton. So now we're looking for...
We have a vote.
Oh, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're looking for a vote and a motion to appoint Erin Higgins as Recording Secretary.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to extend an enormous amount of thanks. The number, one, the number of hours you spend here meticulously taking notes and going back over to make sure they're accurate, but I know it takes you away from your family and a lot of other places, and we are so appreciative and don't take you for granted at all. Thank you.
Eternally grateful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, yet we're looking for a motion to appoint Allison Bray as Treasurer of the Concord-Carlyle Regional School District. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you to Allison.
Yes.
For that work.
And now we're going to appointment of committee representatives and liaison.
I'm sorry, you said Assistant Treasurer?
No.
Or you said Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer again? Whatever.
Oh, the votes?
But it's just Treasurer, right?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to...
No, no, let's clear it up right at the moment. So now appointment to committee representatives. First committee, we need to appoint a liaison person who is the Adult and Community Education Committee and...
I actually sit on that as a member of that board, so I have to report back to this.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay.
I move to appoint Christine Lear to the Dalton Community and... Oh, do we have to speak a vote on these or not?
Well, can she serve both? Can she do both? Do we have to have an official lead on her, or do we rely on Christine to break information back because she's on the board? And how much longer, what's your term on the board, Christine?
I'm adding my second year of three-year...
Of three?
I think it's okay. I don't rely.
What's okay?
I think it's okay, I've heard it'd be the liaison to our committee as a board member. But I don't, that would...
I would add, she would simply recuse herself if it was a policy recommendation that was sent from that group to this group.
Sure.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay.
So we do need motions on all of these.
That's the only votes, yeah.
Okay, so I would move to appoint Christine Lear as Concord-Carlyle Representative to Adult and Community Education.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the appointment to the Board of Directors of ETOC, and I'd like to hear a motion.
We move to appoint Dr. Lori Hunter, Representative of ETOC Board of Directors.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, we're looking for a motion to appoint Joanna Boynton as Concord-Carlyle School Committee Representative to the ETOC Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the...
Did you hit anybody else?
I... It's not on my list, did I?
Yeah.
It goes to my second page, yeah. Turn the page. Oh, the blank on the... Oh, sorry. Sorry. The organization link has...
Oh, the link has his list.
Okay. It's all right.
Next, next is the CCTV Advisory Board.
I'm sorry, it's the Contract Finance Committee.
Oh, the FinCon. Oh, why would we skip that? Can I hear a motion to appoint Robert Grau as School Committee Observer of the Contract Finance Committee?
If you're willing, again, aye.
Yes.
Move that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I did say I would be a wingman for it, helping when you can't. If you guys can't, I can show up.
Just as a general policy, some of the committees, we're gonna have backup individuals and to make sure that we have a person at each one of the, you know, several committees that we really need to be at. So now we're going to number four CCTV Advisory Board.
Oh, just correction on that. This is a seat, a non-voting seat on their Board of Directors called for by their bylaws, implicitly recognized by the contract with Carlyle and contract with Concord.
So you're saying it's not the CCTV Advisory Board, it's the CCTV Board of Directors?
Okay.
But we send a non-voting representative?
So that's two different positions?
So that's two...
No.
No, it's just one, it's...
Number four CCTV Board of Director.
You should say Boards of Directors.
Right, instead of Advisory Board.
Yep.
And I have done this in the past, but given that Court is now with us and has so much experience, I would move to appoint Court Booth as the School Committee Representative to the CCTV Board of Directors.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Take a breath and...
Trying to move this along.
Efficiency.
PEG Advisory Board is next. Can you hear a motion?
I would also appoint Court Booth as School Committee Representative to the PEG Advisory Board because of his expertise in the area.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I would move to appoint him.
I'll second if someone tells me what PEG is.
PEG is the Public Education and Government Catalaxx Television, which is now more than access television, it's internet streaming and so on, comes to us through the two-town governments and their PEG access. This Advisory Board is newly established by the Congress Select Board to try to work out some of the relationships between the two-town governments and the nonprofit corporation.
And I should add that I'm a non-voting member of that board as well, so I keep that court.
Perfect.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving to the Policy Subcommittee, I would like to hear a motion to appoint Mary Storrs and Court Booth to the Policy Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Three, thanks for doing that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're moving on to the Concorde Select Board Meeting Observer. Can I have a motion to appoint Bob Grau, Robert Grau? The one and only, to the School Committee Observer for the Select.
It's easier for Erin if we keep it up.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
As long as you're willing to do that also, Bob, is that, that's not too much of a low if you're doing that in the primary for the FinCon?
We'll have a backup, and again, I'll share the responsibility.
All right, let us know if you need someone to step in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is, I'd like to hear a motion to appoint Wally Johnston as the School Committee Observer to CCTV.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We had two, haven't we? It was Dylan and Wally for a while.
Last year, it was just Dan, as far as I remember.
And it was, wasn't it one man?
There's less things to do with...
Well, how much, what's left?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, there's a couple of things left as we may here later on, but...
I know you have John tomorrow, I'll just see what's up.
And Wally's up in here?
Excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Youth Advisory Council. I'd like to appoint, excuse me, I'd like to move to appoint...
Do you like a motion for that?
Heather to the Youth Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Financial Audit Advisory Committee. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Wally Johnston to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second. And this is the Concord.
Concord, exactly, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion to appoint Wally Johnston to the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee.
Oh, we skipped League of Women Voters Education.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the linked one, yeah.
Please, so I'm looking for a motion to appoint Heather Baut to the League of Women Voters Education Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Wally Johnston to the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Christine...
Sure.
...to the Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just comment that in the past, what we did last year, Melissa was the representative, but given that some things are Concord-related, I was kind of a second or backup or joint with her, so I'm happy to do that again, if that makes sense, and then there are two of us to get time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we have the Carlyle Board of Selectman, Finance Observer, and I'm looking for a motion to appoint...
You guys know you've got...
Oh, you were on the wrong.
I could choose a name, but I don't think I have any.
It probably should be... I was gonna say probably should be me, but...
Well, you have two different ones to do here, Board of Select and Finance. Did you guys just have one person do it last week?
Yeah, so I, I would like to change this to be, rather than Observer, be Liaison. Because we don't, it should be a Liaison, we don't, we don't go regularly to the Selectmen and FinCon meetings, but we communicate with them, you know, as... I don't know, it would be good practice for Christine. What do you have to do?
Boy, she's...
You okay with that, and I'll back you up, or we'll tag team in the beginning, but we'll maybe you officially, is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
As you say, it's Liaise, Non-Observer.
Right. So you're looking for a motion for Christine?
Then I would move to appoint Christine Lear as the Board of Selectmen...
Carlyle Board of Selectmen.
Carlyle Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee Liaison.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have one more, the Facilities, CMS Facilities Planning Committee. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Heather Baut and Wally Johnston to the CMS Facilities Planning Committee.
So moved.
So that should be at Concord.
Yeah.
Actually, that's true, that's...
So we're talking about the region, you're right.
All right, so this is just for Concord.
So then I moved that for Concord.
To appoint, second.
Did you say, what?
Yeah, sorry.
I moved to appoint myself, I guess.
And Wally. I know. Just here to steal the spotlight, not...
Discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
That concludes the most difficult part of the evening. We have two visitors here tonight that probably would like to make their comments at this point, and we're very much looking forward to high school students, Jenny Lee and Ariel Walton. Would you like to identify yourself and then...
I'll give you your update. How about Jenny?
I'm Ariel.
Thanks for coming.
We came before, but I'm next.
Moving around in the beginning since the challenge.
Oh, your mics, are you...
They should be speaking. They're on.
Yeah, you just have to speak into them.
Get a share. There you go.
Now that we're, now that the school year is almost over, a lot has been going on at CC. So to start off, there's been a lot with the music programs, especially Band and Orchestra. Both the Band and Orchestra recently went to the MICA competition at the end of April in Lexington in Place Gold. After, they also had a MICA solo ensemble festival, which was hosted at CCHS. The band had their pop concert this past Friday, May 18th as well. And a lot more went on at CC in April, including Hoops for Heart and the Challenge Success Group ran a Feel Good Friday as well. Hoops for Heart is an annual fundraiser held at CC which fundraises for various heart diseases and raises a couple thousand dollars each year. During Hoops for Heart, there are opportunities for students and faculties to donate money and participate in games in the gym in order to win prizes and enter in raffles. On the same day as Hoops for Heart, Challenge Success, a group formed from the Challenge Success Program in Stanford, California, did a Feel Good Friday, and there were activities in the cafeteria, and various raffles, including raffles for Red Sox tickets. The Challenge Success Program at CC focuses on improving school climate, promoting student well-being, and reducing stress. One of the exciting things that ended about a week ago was a school musical called Guys and Dolls, which was performed May 10th through May 13th. The production and songs were fantastic this year, and many students from all grades took part in the show. And lastly, Q5, a new two-week program at CC, which is implemented to end the year on a fun note, is in two weeks, and students are able to choose electives ranging from tie-dye to paddle boarding to community service projects. And these are the classes that they will be having for the last two weeks of school. In general, students are definitely looking forward to Q5.
There's also a lot going on with sports. Spring sports have been going on for some time now, and many teams are doing extremely well. For starters, the softball team has been undefeated with a 10-win streak. The girls' sorcery teams are doing very well also and have been undefeated except by Akron-Bosco. The girls' tennis team has faced numerous rivals this year, such as Leland and New and So. The Sharks field team had a very big meet this, two weeks ago, called the Twilight Meet, which CC did very well in. Trapp also had a home meet today with five schools competing and had a bittersweet senior night for all the seniors' last home meet in high school. Students have been very academically busy, especially juniors and seniors, due to AP testing, which finished last week. APs went on for two weeks and ended right before prom. Seniors also have finals coming up and will have their last real day of school on May 24th, which is only in a few days. This is the last whole week of school for every month. Lastly, one of the biggest events that recently occurred was prom, which was this half-Saturday on May 19th and was a huge success at the Danvers Yacht Club. This year, something of the boy that started as a joke about prom wear ended up raising over $8,000 for Rodee's Place, which is a women's shelter in Boston, landing us an article in the Boston Globe. Overall, CC students, in fact, have been very busy and have been undertaking countless activities with academics and extracurriculars.
What was that fundraiser that raised money for?
So, girls, like, a few months before prom was starting in January, they started a slipstream where everyone sends their dress in, so the voice on would be really funny if they...
They do it so that no one has the same dress.
Yeah.
Buy your dress, you post it so that...
Like, it's all, it's all limited.
Oh my god, yeah, so the guys are like, oh, we're gonna make this a joke. So they, like, made a group and everyone sent in the same picture of a tux. No one can wear this, I'm wearing this. And then they, like, found the model that was wearing it and contacted him and said, can you come to our prom, like, wearing your tux? And he couldn't come because of, like, rules about you can't be, like, 35.
Oh, those policies.
Did he, did he come to school though?
Well, so, he said that if we raised, I think it was, like, $300 or $500 or something, he would come, before we knew about the policy, and I think it's closer to 10 now. And he said you have to choose, like, a charity that we actually care about, and it was National Women's Day, so, a kid named Spencer, who's the president of Gender Quality Club, chose Rodee's Place, which is for, like, women that are homeless.
Right. That's great.
It was like $8,600.
Oh my gosh, it was the premise to raise the money though?
It was so that he would come.
No, no, but how did they, what was, what did you have to do to raise the money?
Oh, it was on Facebook, I think.
It was just donating.
So the idea was to pay for this guy to come and then go fund, they said, no, they made it for a good cause.
Yeah.
So once Erin's had all of it, the ball went up.
That is excellent. Wow, that's great. Thanks for all the updates.
Well done, thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, you have exams, you have finals?
Yeah, we had a lot of APs together.
Thank you for taking the time to be here, update us.
It's okay, you can leave it, Jenny.
We're back on Tuesday after this.
So next is...
I can make a motion, I would move that the Concord-Carlyle School Committee, entering the executive session under purpose three of the older meeting law, to discuss strategy with respect to budget bargaining. If an open meeting, they have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session at approximately 7:00 p.m.
Second.
For both.
Oh, and I moved that for both.
And second for both?
So we'll do a roll call?
Boynton, aye.
Grau, aye.
For both.
For both.
Storrs, aye.
Aye for both.
Booth, aye for both.
Last name, Eric. Yeah, right. We got it. All right.
So, call the Congress School Committee back.
I'm calling the Regional School Committee back to order, still being recorded. Next, we have public comments, and we have one person interested, Carolyn Reed.
Thank you, Carolyn Reed, 83, Woodson. I'm a member of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, to whom you just appointed Court Booth as your designation, that's a voting position. I just wanted to say thank you very much for making that designation. That brings us to a forum, so we can now have our first meeting with this committee. And Christine Lear is an executive member for Carlyle, also a head committee, so this school committee will be well represented. And our first meeting will be June 14th at 7:00 p.m. at the Concord Select Board Room. It'll last about an hour and a half, that's what we asked for. So, June 14th, first meeting, thank you very much. And Court, Christine, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, we're waiting on the minutes on April 24th, AP.
I'll need a motion to set the minutes of the April 24th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? We're not looking over, I think, yeah, we're perfect.
I think she's good.
Very good.
I'm not gonna suggest a change, but I would want to emphasize, when we were discussing fees, the point I was making was not in regard to subsidy per se for a particular user, but rather the need on our part to make certain there was never a perception of private profit and public expense, so it was a general statement, not a specific one.
Thanks for the clarification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is our presentation from CPAC, Carol Yao. Thank you for having me. This is, I guess, the annual report, right?
This is. Erin's gonna click for me. Which page is it, that one? I'll go to first page. Yeah, sorry, I have to go to first one, yeah. All right, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Carol Yao, as mentioned, President of the Concord Public Schools and Concord-Carlyle Regional School District Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I'll refer to it as CPAC for me on out, it's a mouthful. And I also want to encourage some new members on the committee to take a look at our website when you can, there's a lot of information there, in addition to some reports from previous years, to get a little background about CPAC and both districts. The mission of the Concord-Carlyle Regional School District, SEDPAC, or Special Education Parent Advisory Council, is to provide education and information to parents, caregivers, and the broader community on special education issues and services, to establish better understanding of respect for and support of special education, and to work with the Concord Public Schools and Concord-Carlyle Regional School District to ensure that students' needs are met under Massachusetts Special Education Regulations, and that other applicable laws are being met. And this is in a report that was attached, if you have a chance to look at it. And I want to take a minute and introduce our board members. A few are here tonight, but I do want to read through all of our board members and liaisons, because they're really an important part of our group, and we do a lot of work together supporting the community. Bettina Stevens is our co-chair. Joanne Jensen, our secretary, she's here tonight. You want to come on up? You can't. Paige Hawkins is our membership chair. Shayna Brito, she's here tonight. Come on up if you want to. Helen McKinley, publicity chair. Becky Robishow, technology chair. Tally Ditman-Brené is communications chair. Tally Ditman-Brené is communications chair. We also have C P A C liaisons that have been appointed to be at each school. That is Casey Atkins at the Concord Integrated Peace School, Ayana Carey at Alcott, Betsy Olson-Makowski at Thoreau, Amy Christian at Willard, Concord Middle School. We're looking for somebody. Anybody knows anybody, it's open right now. And myself, I work up at the Concord Carlow High School. And Mary Tamber has been working throughout the district. It's been a really productive act and gear for C P A C and its volunteer board. Through inclusive programming, collaboration with the district, and outreach to the community, C P A C strives to extend its mission. We're delighted to share an overview of our activities broadly organized into two categories: community impact and collaboration. We gratefully acknowledge the goodwill, energy, and positive reciprocity of our concerned parent, caregiver, administrator, and educator communities. Together, we have created something great. That's one. That's good. So, some community engagement. So we have, under the leadership of Shayna, who we met a few minutes ago, she is our chair for events, and she organized a number of well-attended workshops focused on resource navigation, knowledge, and capacity building. The objective of these workshops is to build community among C P A C members and also the greater community. Some of the workshops we have, or all the workshops we held, I'm gonna go over those briefly, is we had a Q and A session and chat with Dr. Lori Hunter and Jessica Murphy, who's here tonight too, director of special education. We do the session every year to give a little meet and greet, coffee, and ask questions. We invited Lori this year as a new member of the school district, and a great session. The Federation of Children with Special Needs presented a Basic Rights of Special Education as a workshop for parents and professionals. We held the Science of Reading Difficulties presented by Nancy Duggan, co-founder and executive director of Decoding Dyslexia of Massachusetts. Mirto Flesas from the Bureau of Special Education Appeals presented a workshop for mediation and facilitated team meetings. This is the second time she's come back to do that, and we're looking at probably having that every year. It's very well-attended and a great way to learn about mediation, if I can do for your meetings. We had a panel presentation hosted by Heather Mahoney. Heather Mahoney is a transition specialist here in the district, if you're not aware of that, and she approached us to hold this meeting. It was on special education transition, guidance, preparation, and development. We had outside agencies come in, held a workshop, and parents could talk one-on-one to find out what things are available in transition years, fourteen to twenty-two. More of the stuff there was about sixteen to twenty-two, but us with the younger kids really had a great, like, oh, okay, kind of thing, it was a great meeting. Just last week, we had a session by Caroline McGuire, New England Coaching Services, and Caroline McGuire actually is a Concord parent as well. The session with my child has trouble with friendships, and we're looking at doing more sessions with her. And then we've also had a social gathering with coffee, or a local coffee shop. Parents, caregivers met and provided support for the community and helps build C P A C. Change the slide. Thank you. So our outreach, how do we get all these people here and understand who we are? Promotion for events is led by Helen McKinley, who oversees multi-channel marketing efforts through social media presence, local newspaper advertising, and school-based electronic distribution lists. Connection and exchange with other area C P A Cs helps reach a broader audience. Additionally, our communications chair, Tally Ditman-Brené, offered six newsletters. Those can be found on the website, we saw earlier. The newsletter is distributed to parents, caregivers, with students receiving special education services in the district and covers topics of interest to the community. Our social media presence, led by Becky Robishow, reinforces outreach with a well-trafficked website, Gmail, Google Calendar, Facebook page, and Twitter. Information is shared about district happenings, area workshops, and articles that are of interest to members of our community. And Casey Atkins, our membership chair, she helps work with the liaisons. The liaisons attend each school's open house to provide partners, I'm sorry, to provide parents and caregivers information about C P A C and act as a contact for each school. This is an important part of connecting parents and caregivers with their specific schools. One thing at the beginning of this school year we had planned to do was conduct a survey similar to one we did a few years ago. However, we opted out of doing the survey due to the West End Program Review that was initiated by the district. They were kind of overlapping each other, and we felt it was just gonna be too confusing and too much at the same time. So we're gonna talk about having that survey again next year. Change the slide. District collaborations. We have regular meetings with Jessica, Director of Special Education. We meet pertaining to special education in both Concord Carlow and Concord. I did that wrong. I spoke that wrong here. So Concord and Concord Carlow Regional. Our conversations are always engaging and provide the C P A C and the district with valuable communication. We also maintain contact with Jessica if the need arises, if there's something going on, that we need to have some help on, or vice versa, we're constantly in contact. C P A C also met with Dr. Lori Hunter last summer, and we had a great introduction, just kind of met, who are you, who are we, it was a great exchange. The C P A C has representation of P T G meetings and school advisory councils. Participation in these groups provides a close-up look at current events in each school, as well as information sharing among parent groups. This year, we formed a subcommittee to review policies that are out for review. The committee is currently in discussion, and we anticipate a recommendation to the superintendent by the academic, by the end of the academic year. There was three policies we were looking at. We would like to thank the district for supporting our membership to the Federation of Children with Special Needs. This membership provides a trained speaker for the Federation to come in and deliver the Know Your Rights workshop. Shayna Brito attended the Vision of Community Conference this year as part of our membership. It was a great opportunity for education, networking with other C P As, and planning for future events. So we can change the slide. Okay, now we come to you guys. The joint school committee presentation. So Melissa McMarroll was appointed to our school committee liaison last year, and we'd like to thank her for her support over the year and wish her the best. She's not here tonight, but we wish her the best. She was a great help. And we look forward, well, we look forward to working. We look forward to having her in members, so we look forward to having you to work with us. I think it's great that you'll be back, that there's a lot going on next year. Yeah, so we're together, ready to do. One of the other things we did with the school committee was the C P A C board followed budget negotiations very closely. We were at a lot of your meetings, and we were there. So after several meetings and discussion with members of the school committee, we prepared and read a statement of support of the school budget to the Concord Finance Committee. Really cool. One of our big highlights of the year, for those of you who are last school committee, is the C P A C appreciation awards to members of the Concord and Concord Carlow School District for having made a positive impact to members of the special education community. This is the second year that Tally Ditman-Brené and Joanne Jensen organized the awards. This is a tradition for many years to come, and we cannot lose that tradition, we're gonna do that every year. And you guys are here to see it. It's amazing, so we're gonna keep going with that. New slide. Thank you. So looking ahead, the coordinated review for both the Concord and Concord Carlow School District is being conducted over the 2019-2020 school year. The C P A C looks forward to having proactive involvement in the review. The West Ed Program Review was conducted in both districts in preparation, in preparation for the coordinated review. The regional report was distributed early this year, and the Concord report is set for distribution by September. It is important that C P A C play an active role in discussions around the findings of those reports. Out of district processes and procedures, this is an area of importance and is a focus for the C P A C for next year. We have agreed to schedule an open forum in September with Jessica Murphy. The details of the event are being discussed, but we feel this will provide an opportunity for improved communication. We're looking at doing kind of like a presentation and then a Q and A, similar to our coffee. And then with the addition of the new district-wide self-contained K one classroom, the C P A C would like to ensure that parents, caregivers are given periodic updates and that the district and classroom team are available for comments and observations to ensure that students' needs are being met. The C P A C will continue to be available to parents and caregivers in the community to provide support and discuss issues pertaining to special education in both the districts. Change the slide. So, thank you. And in closing, it is important for us to remember that we are all here for the students, parents, caregivers, the community, and the district, as stated in the district mission. The mission of the Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlow Regional School District is to educate all students in becoming lifelong learners, creative thinkers, caring citizens, and responsible contributors in global society. The district core values are academic excellence, respectful and empathetic community, professional collaboration, education equity, continuous improvement. The C P A C respects this mission and core values. We look forward to continued collaboration with the school committee, the district, and the community. Any questions, comments, observations?
I love the energy. I love the level of involvement and energy, and those awards were pretty special. But all the work you've done throughout the year.
Thank you. Yeah, faculty, staff, everyone in the building, I mean, go the extra mile.
I will just say, go ahead. I'll just say too, I have been the liaison and then kind of a backup liaison and everything, and it is still amazing the growth over the few years that you guys have put around, just what it became year after year, the growth of what you're doing and the engagement, and it's so appreciated by parents. I'm just so impressed with, constantly with everything that you're doing, and really appreciate it. And then from our perspective too, when you guys got together and Melissa and I joined you to go through the budgets and based on that, you made the statement to the finance committee, and I will tell you, I think that made a huge difference. I heard from you guys and other people that you were behind the budget, and I think it helped us get to a better place. So we really appreciated that, what you did there.
Great, thank you. And again, if you're not familiar, because four years ago is when C P A C really got regenerated here, right? There was not, there was, C P A C didn't exist four years ago. Well, this is year four. And there was Becky and Mary really got it off the ground, and Jessica, and they just, they developed a bylaws, they started the meetings. The meetings do run as open meeting, we aren't considered, I don't know what the right word is, but we have to run by open meetings, and we do that, but I mean, the groundwork is done, and they've done a lot of work over those years, so I encourage you to read through the reports from the last couple of years. Because now we can start to do some work and hoping to get some more volunteers for a lot of the other parent groups, it's, we need somebody, more people, which is good.
Well, it's been incredible amount of work. I mean, just watching, listening to what you've done with your group, and as you say, four years ago, I mean, I started six years ago, there was no C P A C, and watching from the start, kind of pulling it together to now, how comprehensive it is, and still more ideas, and it's really, it's such an amazing service to our parent body and as much as our community and our teachers, and everybody to be educated and be supported in that way. It's really, it's awesome what you guys do and the amount of time you devote to it. So these kids and families are really lucky. Thank you.
So, I went to two or three of your meetings about, like, three, three and a half years ago, and I think that's when this really got started. And I think there were like five or six, at the most, seven people there. And now, I've kind of watched it from a distance, and you seem so much more organized, you have many more ways to communicate, and the energy, I think, is exemplary, you know? So I think you've done a great job, and I'm wondering what you're gonna do next year.
If you want, you know, I think having a presence is what's really important. You know, I mean, it's not all, it is all the things, but having a presence and knowing we're there. One of the things I'd like to say is, C P A C's not an afterthought. You know, you guys ask us questions, we're mentioned at meetings, we're like, no, we have to have C P A C on this meeting or that meeting. And that, I think, is a huge, huge compliment to the groups prior to this, and now we can really just, we can get in there and do the work. And, you know, when issues arise, we have a team ready to go, we have conversations, and there's team us.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you for all of our-
Thank you very much.
So moving on to liaison reports in chair and board, are they in? Liaison reports.
So I just wanted to make one comment in terms of the topic meeting that Dr. Lori Hunter's gonna be standing along with several school committee members, it's gonna be this Thursday. Finance committee has invited us to basically start the new year off, the new year meeting, the new year as far as the school committee is concerned and the finance committee is concerned, not any county or anything. But, so we're all looking forward to that meeting and get to know each other better and presumably improve the whole bunch of process going forward, so.
Is there a presentation or is it a discussion?
So when I asked that question, the answer was to come and just talk. So we've been doing a little, I talked at the town hall this afternoon on timeline and dates, so I think the attempt is to get all synced up on our master plan here, and I know they have a couple of particular questions, they, hoping for information, zero-based budgeting, and I guess early thoughts on the C T A negotiation. It's really early, so. Those are items of interest for them, for sure.
Also, we have another topic?
First you.
No, I didn't want, does anyone have any more questions about the-
No, I discussed it, so that's a posted school committee meeting?
We did post it, just in case you wanna talk during the meeting as a-
Yeah, it definitely should be.
We did post it.
Yeah, it's posted, yeah.
I'll be, I can't go, but I'll be anxious to hear about that.
I was just gonna say that there is graduation on June second, and it's at eleven A M., and we usually muster well before, mostly because the students won't get there, and they do it an hour before, but I just wanted to be sure that everyone knew, and everyone on the school committees invited, and I don't know if you have anything more you wanna add, but just be sure, if you want to be there, that's what it is. It's a pretty exciting day, and hopefully it won't rain. Right. Don't forget to say it. Mary and I both have students graduating.
Yes.
That's great. Special time of the year. In terms of correspondence, we received a reasonably lengthy email from a student at C C H S concerning mainly his endorsement of a track above the old landfill and his thoughts on parking. And I have to say, coming from a student, this was very impressive, and the teachers up at the high school must be doing something right, because it just, I mean, we all read it, right? I mean, was that, I mean, that was, that was-
It all thought out.
Yep. And then we also got-
I think what was most impressive is, he wrote that on his phone. Yeah. You know he did.
That's right.
Wow, this keeps up.
So we also heard from the Center for American Studies concerning handheld and other electronic devices and their effects on students and the general population. They have a sort of a statement saying, don't become a tool of your tool, which I found interesting, so. And we've, I've met with the gentleman, and we'll continue to be in contact. And we also got a letter from Dilvi K, who is the Natural Resources Director, concerning some ongoing drainage issues near the lower fields between the stadium and the train tracks, and we're addressing those as we go forward. Should we add anything more to that, or, I mean, it's early?
It's early, we're working on what the remedy is and how.
It was a tight timeline, they at least requested-
Yes, they agreed to-
In terms of giving a plan, is that a realistic timeline, or are we going back to them and saying, well, you know?
We met with them last week and asked for more time. I think by the end of the week, we'll be able to at least respond with what our next steps will be. When we met, it was very clear that their primary goal is that the remediation happened in the summer. So I think keeping that in mind, we probably have some room to craft, craft the timeline. That said, it's May twenty-first, so it is still a very quick turnaround, so.
Yeah.
We're actively working on it.
Okay. Thank you for taking that.
So moving on to old business, the first item is the Legal Services R F P, and I guess we don't really need a vote on this, just sort of a general consensus that the committee is interested in posting this R F P. Any questions?
Definitely. I have a question, which was mostly just because I don't work with legal firms and those related R F Ps a lot, but, I'm excited to pull it up in time here. But, all of the services that we're looking for someone, thank you, that's a form, to provide, are all just kind of listed individually. Do we have to specify, or is it possible that firms could come in and say, well, I can provide services one through five plus number eight for you? Or is that likely? Is that, do we need to specify somewhere here that somebody could provide some of this, not all? Or is that a given? Or is that a given?
They're gonna, typically they would respond, correct, jump in and... Typically, they would respond with what services they're interested in providing to us.
Okay. It doesn't necessarily have to be all of ours.
It doesn't necessarily have to be all.
Okay.
You can and we already do use an a la carte approach.
Exactly. That's why I'm asking, because that's worked for us, I think in general for a while. And not that we have to keep doing it that way, but I just wanted to make sure that that's still an option, the way that we're sending this out.
I understand what you do in our, oh, sorry, Glenn.
No, this is, I had brought this up in the very beginning, like, do we know if we want one or two or three or four?
Right, exactly, exactly.
What do you and I know, right?
Right, and that's...
And to Heather's point, does this invite the a la carte presentation around their specialties? And is the timeline still suitable for us? It looks very tight right now.
Well, so my understanding about, first of all, the list is in RFPs being able to be as all-inclusive as possible so that someone doesn't, isn't disqualified because they, I mean, they wanted to include everything, but not necessarily someone shows up with a proposal for everything. And the timeline is not dictated a little by law?
Well, I think that, I think the June 1st date is not, is not one of the rules. Which is fine, which is true. But really, really what you're doing here is a number of the services are being provided, a number of the different areas being provided at reasonable rates. There were some services that I think are under question and this will be an opportunity to review rates from other firms. And you will always have the ability to draw on any firm. So if a particular situation comes up that you need some historical information, we're still willing to go in and interrogate.
So we aren't by law required to do an RFP on legal services, so we have more flexibility here than typical. I also did survey the, a number of local districts, so of eight local superintendents, there were only three different firms in those same responses.
So if they're, if they're, let's say that a lot of them are current and are stable?
Yeah.
I just had kind of nitpicky grammar and comments, but I, like, I would, this is going to go up with some kind of a cover letter? Because it, like, the background and goals seem very stiff to me, you know? The only thing we said about our schools, we're located in Concord and we have 3,000 students, 3,000 staff.
It wasn't very warm and fuzzy, but maybe it doesn't need to be.
Yeah, I expected it would go with a cover letter outlining.
Okay.
Personal touch too.
The only thing I think, I mean, I can give you, the only thing I would, that, I don't know if it's worth discussion at all, but number three under professional qualifications says, "Ability to provide guaranteed same-day response." I was gonna suggest we add like odd matters deemed critical by the districts. We're not asking for same-day response on absolutely everything, but were we...
Yeah, I only hesitate there because I've worked with a firm that this was a huge issue and we couldn't even get quick, we couldn't get timely responses even on something less important. And so reasonable and timely, I'll be coming up for debate perhaps, but when you can't get an answer, it can really bog you down even if it's something small, so.
Do you satisfy it with same-day response upon request?
Well, that's where we're trying to go.
And that's the district's determination whether it's critical or not.
I just would say right now, the two firms we're working with, we don't have to qualify any of that. They're both incredible responses, so.
It does say, it says ability to.
It's, I was gonna say, and this is kind of requiring, this isn't a contract with anyone. This is kind of asking for their general abilities.
Then, as you know me, Laura, I just have grammar stuff.
Yeah, no, send it, give me that. Thank you. Policy Police. That's good. We need you.
That's confident. We depend on you.
I say, let's keep on and help, you know, do this plan and reach out to the parents.
Thank you for you.
June 1st is not realistic, so what?
I was gonna suggest the 15th, that's almost a month for them to respond.
If you get it out tomorrow and then it's followed, you're not...
We could always extend it if there's losses.
I don't know if it's reasonable.
Well, then I have to add exactly two, so you probably want to...
Well, let's clarify that, because I think when we last talked, you had asked me to solicit 10 firms and start there without a broad-based advertising. Is that still present?
I think so.
I think so. Yes.
We're not just looking for, you know, right?
Yes.
So we'll start there.
Yeah, so let's start with that.
Let's start with the 15th and see what we get.
15th and direct.
So I just, so, so then, so what's the process after that? And you'll look at it and, I'm just trying to get a feel for the timeline.
Yeah, I think, I think this is where it's different in every district. Sometimes they bring the certain firms in for some conversation. Sometimes it's just the superintendent talking to them or making a recommendation. I think that's where you'll have to tell us how much, it's your decision. So you need to tell us what the process you want, how involved you want to be. So that might be something to decide the next meeting, before the 15th.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, it'll depend on how many responses we get too.
Yeah, well, yeah, really thin, it might be easier. So why don't we put that on for the 12th, this is a firm open this...
Okay. Anything else on this subject?
If you have questions on any of that, we're just, okay, tell them.
The next item is the Campus Advisory Committee and specifically the next steps that the school committee should take in response to the excellent report that we received at their last meeting. And you know, the report basically identified several projects that were deemed to be worth further consideration. Some of those were, you know, you could say shorter-term oriented projects and others maybe a little bit further out in the distance, you know, solar power and the bathroom facilities at the stadium. I think that's a little bit further out. But in the short term, and I do recall the comments that the principal, Mike Mustolo, made. He mentioned two short-term projects, parking and a track. But we also have heard and had a lot of student input from high school students concerning a community garden and greenhouse and also an outdoor learning commons. So it would seem that, and I'm very interested in what everyone else has in terms of other priorities, but it seems to me those could be identified as priority items in the relatively short term.
I think so. I'm happy to speak. I've given a bunch of thought to this and kind of went through and wrote down my thoughts on where we go from that, because that was so much information that I think we all kind of went, "Oh, my gosh, wow, now what do we do with this?" So I kind of feel like that, after all of that, the Campus Advisory Committee gave us various things that recommended further exploration. I felt like as a committee, we need, now need to come back and say, "Okay, of those things, which ones are we highlighting as priorities right now?" So I feel like we need to do that and highlight those and then lay out how we move forward in regards to each of those in high level. And in terms of priorities, the three that stood out to me were, one, parking, two, the track, and three, and I'm kind of clumping together, the outdoor experiential items, whether it's greenhouse, garden, outdoor commons and classrooms. It might be one, two, three things, but all of that kind of adds a category together. And then, so that's on what I feel like our priority should be. I can keep going on what I think the next step should be, but, or I can let other people chime in before I get there.
Well, I had one thing to say just about that and I would be interested in your thinking on next steps too, because that's kind of where we are. But I think you've articulated what I felt as well, but I thought we took parking out of sort of, out of it and make it, it's...
Yes, out of it, let, or exactly, not something that we're going to...
Yeah, we're taking that and we've decided we would take that on and figure out short-term, long-term.
Yes.
You know, warrant articles, debt exclusion, et cetera, to what end, you know? Like, that's gonna be on us as a district and as a school committee to resolve.
Agreed. I just wanted to mention that as something that we, I'm not neglected.
Yeah, I would say, we, I mean, we've had a few conversations around parking. I think John will update us and, you know, we're just doing that level.
That's right, exactly. We're already working on it.
I would say, let's take that off the list of sort of what next. But I would say the same thing, that what next, the top priorities seem to have risen to the top are the track and this outdoor classrooms education being sort of gardens and classroom.
That's good. That's exactly what I was gonna say in terms of next steps. Oh, go ahead.
I'd love to understand more about that, because the way I understand it, we are working earnestly on a short-term solution. But would we not want to incorporate longer-term parking solution with longer-term books at track and the outdoor experiential learning sites? Because all of those have to, I think, fit together unless we paint ourselves into a corner with one of them in a way that we later regret. So can we look at parking in a two-phase approach, one being a now, temporary, mitigate urgent problems, two being a more systemic campus-wide look at what's gonna all be happening there?
Definitely, I think it's...
I agree. I think it sort of goes in very well-communicated tracks if both are going forward. I think there's, I thought our agreement was, we gotta do something now for parking. And now in those conversations has been like, okay, short-term, long-term, and starting to define, you know, those questions, which, you know, we haven't gotten to. But so dealing with that and then I think there's sort of a connection to the next steps and how it aligns and communicates with that.
Exactly.
So on the agenda, CCHS parking is a separate item, but I think it's probably a good time to blend it into the spot decision. Because the update on temporary parking, we did identify an area that we were excited about and we've started that exploration process and it's not really key. With the type of information that we have and the type of trend that we're thinking about, because what it would have provided was around probably at a max maybe 50 spaces. But there's a number of issues that are coming up regarding materials, the drainage is only consideration, potential impact on the water conservancy district. And so it seems what we had in mind is off the table for a short-term implementation. So Court is absolutely correct in the sense that all of it should be, in my opinion, should all be weighed in together. It's part of a larger process. Probably something that you folks want to take up a notice. I know that there's some conversation regarding potential for a special town meeting in the fall. Just, you need to note that you're going to need two town meetings to do anything substantially. So you'll have to coordinate a cow out of town, don't you, this part?
So I'm gonna say something really unpopular, and it's probably, I'm living in a glass house here, because I have a kid who's graduating. If we're not gonna have additional parking spaces come the fall, can we change the rules for parking? There are lots of students that need to park for different reasons. And a lot of students that drive their cars because it's easier or whatever, they do. So I like, we can continue to fight this, there are too many cars and not enough spots, or we can just sort of change the rules of the gauge. And I don't know if that's for this committee to decide, but we're, if we're not gonna have more spots in the fall, this is just gonna drag on and take more administrative time and we're just kidding ourselves unless we do something very different.
So this is really...
So how unpopular will that, I mean, I...
Yeah, no, I...
But that's realistic. Yeah, absolutely.
There should be something, or if it's just a block cover.
So I think we do have a lot of discussion to have about the fall, because to leave the meetings we had last week with the complexity of the situation the way it is and being presented to us and the challenges to get from where we are to where we want to be, we have a lot to talk about for the fall, because right now we have no solution. And yes, all the long-term pieces need to be part of one big picture. That's part of why I didn't recommend the warrant article back in April. But I don't think any, any group that's gonna work on those projects you just mentioned wants to get distracted with the challenges that are gonna come with the parking. It all has to have conduits of communication between each other. But one thing that we think are very clear on is that it's not simple and it's gonna be complex and it's probably gonna be expensive. So there's a short-term discussion and then there's a much, likely very long-term discussion. So this is all as a few days old.
And the short-term, I think what you're saying, where it's a short-term, it's not a solution, but a short-term tactic is without extra parking, that we look...
Somehow we have to cut back on the number of cars that are coming in.
And somehow we look at managing it differently.
Correct. I don't have any answers to that.
Right, exactly. Not a mistake.
It will be very unpopular, but how unpopular is it today? But I mean, it just...
And ultimately, one of our tasks is to see that you and Mike get to do what you're here to do. And we need to get kids to school. And we need to allow the town to operate with somewhat reasonable parking on nearby streets. And if we don't look at solution B because temporary solution A isn't available, I think we're dairily... Is it popular? No, I would agree with you, it's not.
That's why we have to sit on the side of the table.
Yeah. Is it necessary? Unless somebody has another temporary solution, the answer is yes, it is necessary for us to look at internal policies for what happens on the grounds of that campus. Reasonably, who can park and who can't. Otherwise, we know what happens because it's happening now. Dean, I'm accepting. So the question is how? How do we move ahead quickly? Because nobody likes to be discomforted in any way. And so do we let people anticipate changes that are gonna be necessary for next year or the better?
So it's clearly a top priority right now to further explore any options we have concerning parking. And we're working on it, you know? We are working on that. It seems, you know, what Joanna said about sort of two tracks moving at the same time, I think that makes quite a bit of sense. We clearly have to move forward on the parking issue involving possibly some unpopular changes. But we have to get to some...
Well, if we don't have more spaces, we need fewer cars.
Exactly. It's physics, right?
I think we have to change the conversation and the messaging. If we're not gonna be able to have more spaces next year.
Yeah.
That's the key. Between now and then, you know, sort of people take off.
But the alternatives didn't become unpopular tonight with John's information. Some of the solutions can be unpopular in some quarters regardless. I don't think that parks...
Because if we need 100 new spots and we can only get 50, we still have some tough choices to make, right? And I'm just throwing that out there.
And it's gonna be educational money devoted to it.
Well, and the thing about it is there's very limited space to consider. Parking has to be flat and it has to be big space. And so, and not a lot of options, despite the fact that there are a lot of acres.
So, you know, parking is on one side and then we have these three or four other projects that sort of...
Okay, so process-wise, you want my idea?
Well, I mean, yeah.
You got one, give it to me.
I'm thinking you wanna give it to us.
Okay, so here are my ideas. Well, and I'll leave, parking, so I'm thinking of this in silos. Parking is one silo.
Absolutely.
And we won't define right now exactly how we're gonna move forward, but that's one silo that needs some short-term addressing and a long-term strategy. So we'll park that over there. Thank you. I had to.
We don't have any room for it.
No, not on the street. I'm walking, I get... Okay, so then... Don't worry. Not on the street. I'm walking back in. Okay, so then, coming out of this, the other things that we just talked about as priorities are the track and then the outdoor things. So we're going to look at those two separately. In terms of the track, I think the biggest question there is funding. If we're looking at a track, how are we going to fund it? What does it look like? So I feel like on that, that needs a small group of people to follow up on it. Some small, you know, planning, funding exploratory planning committee that's going to focus on what could funding a track look like? Is it all private money? Is it school money? Is it a mix? What does it look like? And based on that information, then we could then figure out more about moving forward and get to, you know, a building committee and a more broad planning. First, it's about how would we fund it and therefore what would the process look like. So I see a small group to look at that. Then there's the outdoor stuff, which honestly I think is really administrative thing. So given that Lori has said that's something that she and Mike could manage, I feel like that that's something.
We don't have any money, but we could manage.
Right. But without money, you can do a lot of it. But I feel like if we give the nod and say that's important, then we don't want to stand in the way and create a bottleneck with other committees and all that. Then we give Lori the nod and say, okay, that's for you and Mike. Go and figure it out.
But giving the nod implies potentially some funding. Maybe not a big number, but some funding.
Right. And then they could, and I think they would come back to us with needs. But we're talking a different scope of funding on a track versus a classroom.
Or it could be rolled into some of the warrant article discussions where I think there's options down the road that don't necessarily need committees.
Right. I just wouldn't, I feel like those things are more kind of small, low-hanging fruit enough that if we have a committee to try to run it, we're just going to slow things down as opposed to letting Mike take it and run with it.
Does anybody know what's out there now? The canoe with the flower?
Yeah, I saw the.
The benches.
I saw the.
Yeah, the pallets. They've been benches out of pallets.
Oh, the pallets, that's right.
Yeah.
Which I think could remind us that students could have a relatively large voice.
Oh, absolutely.
One, that would be.
And I see what you're saying as it's going from idea to concept to concept with alternatives.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So anyway, those were kind of the two moving forward pieces, a track and then the outdoor things. And then as kind of an umbrella, when we all started talking about campus advisory committee, you know, we debated the charge and what it was. Some of the initial discussions had it as a standing committee that would then kind of address things that came up and there would always be a group to bounce things off of. I don't think we need, and this I've been debating mentally because of our last discussion, when, you know, Bob was saying, let's keep this committee going and Mary's saying, I don't think there's anything for the committee to do anymore. I feel like there could be value in a long-term standing committee, but that's something that maybe is a district committee, that maybe we even ask Lori to create, or maybe she wants to create one. But if there is some type of a committee that basically I think could help administration and us, when things come up that are campus-related, it could be a way that we can sort through it in an organized way and address it and know that, okay, well, that committee's meeting again in February. We'll take it up then. You know, whether it's a committee that we create or a district committee and we're invited to, that we could all do. But I feel like something that's just a standing group that maybe meets three or four times a year. This is not a, you know, every few weeks we're getting together doing things, but a standing group that can filter ideas and projects that come through regarding the campus. And obviously can kind of keep tabs on these other things that we're working on. Oh, and the last thing, in terms of, to your point, making sure that all of these hands are talking to each other, I think it would be very important, you know, if we're creating a small group to look at track options, that the primary charge obviously is figuring out funding options, but a secondary piece of the charge is to communicate and coordinate with other groups working on campus. And, you know, all of these would be charged with staying in communication in relation to the other projects. And then a standing committee could help be the umbrella for that. That's mine.
Would that be different from a long-term planning, the long-term plan?
Yes, from the, from.
Well, is there a long-term planning committee?
No.
No.
No. So it would be different from it. There's a Concord long-range plan committee is very different. That's like comprehensive town long-range.
No, no, I was thinking.
We don't have a.
The school plays a small role in.
Right, yeah.
In our own.
Right. We don't have a long-range planning committee of our own.
I think it would be great because this committee could sort of serve that role, which is if somebody wanted something, you could say, well, that is actually, you know, we're working in that direction.
Right.
As opposed to everything is a brand-new idea that has no place to be discussed or fitted to the larger scheme.
Right.
I'm undecided on the long-term nature of it for this reason. I think your reasoning is very sound, but I think we also need to add in what motivates people to participate and participate actively. One of the things that might motivate them is that there is more specificity about a goal that they're trying to attain together. Folks might come at this with a little more commitment and passion than a committee that is charged with, let's see what comes your way.
Well, I would argue if it's really three or four times a year, that might be this committee. And if there's something specific that comes at us, then we're farming it out or, you know.
So, you know, I like the idea, but maybe that's something we should discuss more at length at our workshop, you know, just in terms of what type of, you know, the longer-term aspect. The other things obviously we should, you know, put back on the front burner and discuss those. But because, you know, I could see an advisory committee working there also, you know. The other model would be an administration-oriented committee with one or two school committees members on it, you know. So that's, I haven't personally thought enough about it to be strongly, you know, feeling one way or the other, but both I think would work.
Something people can give thought to. I like the idea of talking about that at our workshop in August.
One more time.
So I, I don't want to form a track and field committee until this committee decides that we, that that's our top priority or whatever the, like, we're kind of going to figure out what the mission should be.
Yep, we did kind of jump ahead.
But what are, you know, the campus advisory made like five, listed five or six things. What do we want to move forward?
Right. And that would be the first part of that.
And I know we can keep using the track as the example, but what about the fieldhouse or?
Yeah. No, so let's go back.
How are we making it work out?
Exactly. That was the first part of my comment. And my personal opinion was that the track and the outdoor things rose to the top of the priority list. But that's, let's return to that because that's what the committee's to be.
We're not arguing that, but I think we should make a clear decision.
We need to, exactly. I agree. And that's what I'm saying, that I think, I feel like out of tonight, ideally, or at least soon, that we should get to that. We as a school committee need to say, okay, thank you for that report. Out of all the things that you recommended exploring here, the things that we think are the top three or whatever it is to pursue.
So the problem with that in my mind is all these things compete for the same space. And in particular, parking is going to compete for the same space as these things. And we've determined that parking is a real stressor for us. The second thing is, in my experience around these, this level of projects, be it fieldhouse, a track, a rink, that they only happen when a group of private citizens come forward and say, we want to do this. We have some level of funding. We will, you know, they look to us, you know, the original two-turf fields, Doug White Fields, the CCA play, the tennis courts, they all had the lacrosse group, they all have, you know, they came as a sort of, we have this idea and want to do it. So short of that, I don't, I don't, I don't think us, I don't think we're in a position to determine what should go there. Because I don't think that we, one, have the funding, and two, where all things compete for the same space. I mean, I'm saying tonight, like, maybe I continue to talk about it, but we are, I just think, and we don't have any funding and we don't, you know, the level of funding and design and all those things that would be needed in any one of those projects isn't done. And the most recent public-private event, the library, all the ones I've seen, museum, they, you know, they come for CPC funds, they come for, you know, it's not, there are a lot of layers to it, or CPA funds, Community Preservation Act, they find different ways and different buckets to fund all these things. So I just think that the funding is a huge piece slash the people who say, I want to design this and make this happen, need to exist. And they also all, right, currently compete for the same space.
So the group that I would call the track group, which is consistent of a couple of the coaches and many parents, it's the largest team at the high school. They presented us with a very detailed RFI. Mary, right?
The most detailed of any. But I won't, it's not at the level where we have really hard information.
No, no, no.
Go ahead.
But my point is there is a group of people out there that clearly they, they are somewhat organized, it seems to me, but not to the point where they've already done fundraising, et cetera. Because as you said, Joanna, and I agree with that completely, you know, the, who's going to do any fundraising if you're not sure you're going to have a project and put the money into it, right? So it's a little chicken and an egg type of thing. And so if we give an indication that this is a priority for the campus, which I think that's fair to say it is, as is of course parking and the outdoor projects. And they're much easier to place. They don't really compete as much with other, you know, uses. It's the track and parking is potentially going to compete with each other. And but if we don't move forward on both, then, you know, we lose valuable time because of town meeting. We need a feasibility study at some point if we want to be serious about it, right?
So I guess if we were serious about some projects, we're serious about doing a that level project on the campus, we would have to go back to deeper into the list and public, you know, and community, the school's input if we were really going to build something. I think there would be competing, you know, groups, fieldhouse, ice hockey rink, track. I'm not saying which, like, but I'm saying, like, think if you're, if you're, if we were going to say, I have something in a position to say, track's the one. I think it's a great option, but I don't think that, I don't, I don't know. Am I wrong? I feel like if we were going to really do a capital project that was millions of dollars, we would win it out on that list to the top three or something and say, let's figure out, let's go back and look at the, you know, the needs, what would the, you know, more dig down, new advisory or whatever of all the work that you guys already did. I just, I don't, I don't feel like I know that the school community would choose track over some of the others. Am I wrong?
Maybe I was reading on the report, that the feel that I got from the campus advisory report was that that seemed to rise higher on the others in the list of momentum and community support and potential funding, that there was a group there ready to kind of run and fund it. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we need more. So I kind of felt like the charge of the campus advisory was to do that, to get the community feedback and figure out what's the, what's the best option to recommend. But you bring up a good question is that, was that the full scale? Do we, do we need to do it a level deeper? I don't, I don't know. I mean.
Oh. I think we need to do it a level deeper.
Okay.
John wants to.
Is it a lane track or a six-lane track? There's other configurations for parking that might be.
Yep, right, right.
There's changed, changes in the engineering approaches to it. And I may recommend to you that with the possibility of an upcoming special town meeting in Concord, that there'd be some discussions perhaps with Carolina about similar initiatives. Are a decision made by the regional school committees waiting for the next town meeting cycle, do a significant warrant article to address the parking to get, and have a provision in there to have the types of feasibility studies and engineering studies and conversations with zoning folks to have the engineering analyses that they will need. I think that's really, those might be very good next steps. And then you can form an action committee to resolve some of these issues.
And with that assessment around parking, take into account potential other projects that would follow up?
I think, I think you want, if you folks have made a decision that you want to expand the parking and that, that has been pretty much determined, that there is a real desire to address the parking issues on a long-term basis and not in a temporary stopgap measure, substantive response to it. You need some, you need some significant work to figure out how it gets done and gets through. And that will take money. And that, you already know that you need to pave the ring road. You already know you need to do some lighting improvements. There are some items inside the school that are suitable for treatment as capital expense items. There is a significant amount of money associated with those issues. And in with that warrant article, you can bundle in the types of engineering services that you need to move forward on these others. You may find out that some of the choices that you're advocating for or that you're interested in won't, won't get through.
Given the past week, we've spent a good, a good amount of time with the town, different groups. And I think John's right. I think we should start with, here's the list, what are viable options or what makes them viable options? Because I think we are, yeah, we need to start with them is, I think, the takeaway that I had the past week as well. So we don't spend time and money coming up with plans that the 12-hour when we share them with those who have oversight.
No, don't worry.
It's not doable.
That definitely makes sense. So if that's the case, we, we start there. And if we're doing that, it sounds like there's, there isn't a consensus to say it's track versus something else. We start there with the multiple ideas, right? And just get information on, okay, those multiple ones. A track is, is a track feasible, et cetera, et cetera. And then a fieldhouse, is it feasible, et cetera, et cetera, with multiple ideas.
So at some point, that has to be fairly specific. You can't just say, right, like, hey, what could we do? I feel, we could send an engineer off for days or weeks or years, saying, well, you could put a track there and a fieldhouse over there and then we can get 22 projects this year. Like, how do we help, how do we share what priorities or how do we manage the scope of this?
So what I'm hearing is, Joanna, you said it, Mary, you state your sense of what the advisory committee intended to do, which was put ideas forth, not to necessarily advocate for or prioritize, because you didn't know that far. So does that not necessitate not a special town meeting kind of calendar, but a next year's annual meeting calendar so that in the interim, we can, number one, begin parking right away, in whatever way we can prior to town meeting, policies or otherwise, temporary or otherwise. And secondly, design some process, to your point, Joanna, whereby we look at the other proposals put forward, trying to prioritize our rank order or put some assessment around those, around pros and cons, educational and otherwise. And then that goes to town meeting or a warrant article or a study.
So I think, I agree with what you're saying. I think one of my struggles is in terms of like advocating, the track has risen to the top of the list and we don't necessarily have a clear plan for a fieldhouse. And I'm going to use this as an example because it's a, that would be a potentially very large, very expensive project, but. because it's a, that would be a potentially very large, very expensive project, but if we were to talk to the community and get feedback for the kinds of things we could do, and I'm going to call it a fieldhouse, whether it's got hockey sometimes, and other, you know, other fieldhouse thing, whatever, at other times of the year, there, there might be a greater level of interest, I mean, there's a lot of interest in a hockey rink, so I don't want it to be a popularity contest, I guess, we've heard a lot from track, if we had to buy a courts track on the committee, so I want, I just want to be careful about that. And that's what my struggle is, is like, what do you tell an engineer to look at, because there are these great ideas, or how do we get enough feedback to say prioritize one over the other, or can we potentially do both, right? And I, and that's crazy, I know right now, but.
So one of the things that I think was very successful on the committee was the amount of time we spent learning about the conditions of the landfill and the limitations and the possibilities, and I think I'm sitting here reflecting, like, on the fact that we need to better understand that of the entire high school campus, because what's happened the last week is those limitations and restrictions have been brought to us as one idea floated, which was parking. And I feel like if we don't do the homework on what the different uses of the multiple areas of the campus are, the way we did so in depth of the landfill, it may drive the decisions more naturally, which is somewhat what happened, why we got to track, right? Because it doesn't dig in and some of those other pieces.
So how do we get that?
I think it's meeting with the town officials who are educating us on their, their needs and their, their concerns, coming in to anything on that campus, and different groups have different, different needs, and I think we need to sit with all of them and better understand what those are, we've got them now, not anecdotally, a little better than that, but informally, but I think if we were to masterly, you know, really structure this so that we could hear their, the requirements they have for what's done there, I think that would put us in a better place.
So what about this as a kind of timeline of next steps? Very rough, but first step, do exactly what Laurie was just talking about, do really look into that, work with the town, get a better feel for what's possible where. Second step, do that, based on that, do that second level of understanding community desires and needs, understanding where the driving forces are, and just that community input and outreach stage that, that will help us further define what is the top priority.
But, but to Laurie's point.
But based on that, right?
There might be many.
That might not, yeah, no, it might be that that's not even necessary, because only one thing's a possibility, but so.
Or it could be that one piece of land that's actually available without swapping other pieces around or something, and it could be those types of things.
So that could define it, and if it, I mean, feasibility could define it, and if feasibility doesn't, and we have, you know, two potential options that we could look at, then we go and figure out what's the community desire. Is that?
So let's, let's just say, we could have, this is crazy, we could have a parking lot on that landfill, or we could have a track, right? We're going to go figure out.
Right, if those are our only two options.
Potentially, we make the call, or we don't.
Right, then I think we go get some community input and figure out what's best, and then come back.
Well, I, so, so the community, this is all, like, I, no bid, no million-dollar project have I ever seen happen without someone driving it with a big donor.
Right.
And the reason the BD Center's there is because the money was there from the donor, it was in the will. The reason, you know, as you see a play app, because there were a few people who said, "I'm willing to give a lot of money and a lot of time," and different groups, tennis did a fundraiser, you know, lacrosse, soccer, a whole bunch of groups have also donated, CPA funds were found, like, it took a group to drive it, happened at the museum, it happened at Emerson Umbrella, it happens at the library, it happens everywhere, that someone comes in and says, "I want to do this, I'm willing to give a lot of money to it and time." So after that, I want to be really wary of spending a lot of time on something that we don't have any funds for, and we have one thing that we feel a lot of pressure on and a lot of stress on families, and that's parking. So we're going to spend time on trying to resolve something that is real right now. Candidly, the track would be awesome, the fieldhouse with a rink that could be, be awesome, but that also takes off some, something else offline, because you can't build a landfill. The track, there is one down the road right now, it's like there, there are, there are, there is one thing that we have agreed that is providing, it's enormous stress for families, and if we don't start working now, we're not going to have anything for a while, because what we learned was, there's, it's, the whole campus is in a water conservancy district, the rules, the laws are totally different, it's near wetlands, I'm part of the, it's, you know, there's an A U, whatever it is with the D, the Department of Environment, the environmental, you know, regulations, so what we've just installed, there, I mean, there's so many things that it's not simple. And we agree on one thing that's really pressurized, and we may decide we're not going to do it in the configuration that they allow, but they are not going to allow us to put parking just anywhere, they're not going to allow us to just use any material, they're not going to allow us to, you know, all, different things, there's different things that could be on the landfill versus the places outside the landfill, there's, I mean, it's so complicated.
So.
And I don't want to spend a ton of time on something that's just like pie in the sky, as much as it's like awesome idea, and we have a real issue, and we're, we're under the gun, and we're not going to pull off what we hoped we would.
So do we imagine that, that we can't muster any interest anywhere until we tell people what's feasible? And parking rises as number one now. Have we ever come up with a definitive number of the minimum number of spaces we would accept? I'm not sure we have, I've heard 80, I've heard 100, I think we need a number.
This conversation. It's a stopgap measure.
Well, what's the real number? If we're going to go for a real surge, if one would come for the junior class? Do we have to decide?
What number?
I think it's 300. We have to decide a number.
So if you, if 300 more.
For any inquiries that Laurie or anybody else makes on behalf of schools, wouldn't count.
Well, I think, to take, take that another step further, I think what we, at least with parking, I think you're right, we should be very, very specific, we should really go back and say, okay, there are exactly this, I know you have them, but we don't have, you know, there are this many legal spots, tend to be this many, not, there are this many that, you know, don't have parking, like, we should, because if, if you're right, it's, because a lot of it's calculated in their previous service calculations, and there's a grandfathered number, there's a number we're at, there's a law, there's a legal number, there's, you know, we probably have to be, like, really precise in those, the, you know, to get to the next step of even what we're asking. That's my.
So if I hear you, you're saying, put everything else on the back burner and go parking, put all our time and money into resolving the parking.
Well, my understanding, this is, the caveat is, the understanding is the parking can be included in a warrant article.
And that the immediate work would be town feasibility work that is not contractual work.
So I, I was going to say, I agree that the top priority is parking, and that we don't want to just focus on that, and we don't want to spend time applying the ideas and stuff like that, so I'm totally with you on everything that you just said, Joanna. And I think it's a good reminder for us to all stay focused. At the same time, I think we could start to understand what other options could be, and the one thing that I would say in response to the, your comment, that you're right, nothing big is going to happen without a group coming in and saying, "I'm going to drive it and I'm going to help fund it." But that, I think it gets back to the chicken and the egg concept, which is, that may not happen until we have an understanding and communicate what could be possible on this campus. So with parking as the first priority, and I think we should establish that and say, yes, let's, let's make that our priority, let's figure it out, because it's what's causing stress for our students, and let's not lose it to something else. Let's keep that the first priority, but then if we can, at the same time, start to understand with the town what the other options on the campus conceivably could be, I think that would be a useful thing, because then if we know what the other options are, and we communicate that out, we see if there's a group that says, "Oh, my gosh, really, we can do that? Okay, we're there, we're behind it, we're going to drive it and help you fund it." If that exists, then great, if it doesn't, then there's no point in wasting our time.
Also go inform the best place to put your parking.
But, right, right.
So that you can say, no, this space will work for a fieldhouse, and this one won't, or a track, and so maybe that's where the parking should be. So I think that, that to have a study of the available spaces so that you can do that, let's start with.
Parking can be done in each, based on, yeah, well, at least from the town's perspective in terms of limitations.
You want to study to determine where parking can be achieved most economically?
Yes.
And then you want to figure out what's the impact of that. And right now, if it's like most economical place would likely be on top of the, the old student parking lot, because it has a lot of provisions on it. Then you want to determine if there's another site that could also be done, the water cost differential between those two, so that you deserve that landfill area for the other things that you're talking about. So you, you want options, you want to define options with engineering analyses that will satisfy the questions that may come up with the town, with permitting process, and with, and with possibility to make.
I, I think that makes sense. What, what's your ballpark figure on the cost of that study?
Yeah, that's.
Well, I, I, I can't just throw a number at you.
No, 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 but a range, maybe, or?
I, I.
Minimum.
Minimum, max?
Tens of thousands.
I would say, several tens of thousands.
Yeah, it could be hundreds of thousands.
If I had to establish a range just on the spot, I'd say 6200, something like that, depending on how many options we call up.
Again, I go back to, but if we're looking at options that we can't, we have not, we have no funding for, and we have no group ready to carry the ball, I just think that's not a good use of our money.
You can't, you can't go to a group without having something that's defined that will work.
Okay, so, so let me flip it around, if there's a group out there that's interested in these things, a track or a fieldhouse, we are open to having them come say, "We'll do the work to go to that camp," you know, to, or, and figure out if we could, if we could do, pull us up on the campus.
That's, that's what we have to do. That's going to, you know, the, the track people might be willing to do that, the hockey people might be willing to do that, I think you want kind of an independent study that, and then figure it out from there. That's why I would, I would suggest that you bundle it into a warrant article that is, is part of the non-controversial things, I don't think there's any controversy about paving, paving the access road, is that controversy about money associated with it, but not the needs.
But the big part of the money on that study will come from parking and/or track or other uses, you know, it's not the resurfacing, you know, we don't.
It's, it's a failing, you know, and it's 10 to 70 or something.
But I, I, I don't want to be argumentative, but I think that what I don't want is, is for a group of whoever to come to us and say, "Here's your check for $10 million, put my, fill in the blank, my field or my whatever there," because that's, we've got to prioritize that.
Right, I agree, I think, I'm just pointing out that the recent, the way any of those have.
It's the only way it's going to happen?
That's the way, and, and, you know, they, they cleared up the whole woods to put two turf fields in, and I don't, I wasn't around the school committee then, but it was initiated by the people who wanted to get in fields.
No, no.
But anyway, I, I, we, maybe we go back to, sort of, working on it in the workshop, and personally, I kind of like the idea of maybe a smaller committee of administrative, um, school committee people who are sort of the receptacle for ideas on campus, to your point, Heather, something, of something that becomes like, you know, we need, we need somehow to kind of organize it and keep it in one place, and maybe that, something like that becomes the, the vessel for doing some of this work to say, let's do, let's do, I think we need a warrant for this much to do an assessment of, can you put a building on, or, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like there's so many great ideas, I love them all, but I just want to be realistic, and we have a real, serious parking issue, and that parking is going to compete for the space of any one of these.
So the next, sorry?
Go ahead.
Now, the next steps forward would be check with the town engineer, et cetera, et cetera, to ascertain where anything can go, and like, how long?
How do you ask that question?
Well, I haven't finished yet, so.
How do we know that?
Anything.
How, when and how long would it take for the, you know, the NRC and other town departments to determine that?
It's, um, they, they need to review some sort of plans.
Okay, so they, in other words, we have to present them with a plan, and then they say, okay, this is, this is fine.
I still have to certify an engineer.
What features have you built into this slot that make us not worry about the previous service?
So I think we have to back up and come to grips with how many parking spaces we consider to be the minimum, and then how that relates to any policies vis-à-vis who can park and how, those two are going to collide, they're going to intersect, and it's on us, I think, in Lori's recommendations. And so I think we have to put together those two, those two facts before we can then give any charge to anybody to come up with any plan to give to anybody. We need to know what we're asking for, and our level of expertise goes as far as what student needs we need to deliver to on that property.
So what, why don't we do, Bob and I have been in the meetings with the town and the town engineer and the National Resource Commission, and that we had the last, at least, what if we, by next meeting, come back collectively, the three of us, four of us, do that work to say, let's get really specific, what do we have, how many part, you know, and then like, sort of, come back and maybe, can we, do you think that's realistic? We can get more specific and more specific about, sort of, our actual ask, that it's like accommodates what we need to, it's not.
Yeah, what more to target, sure.
Yeah, and maybe it's like, you know, the platinum, and then the, the paper.
And to that point, I would suggest the platinum wouldn't include the, the headcount of juniors and seniors, and faculty necessarily, but rather our demonstrated need for parking, because we've got data, and it's not every single student.
No, it's not every single junior, but we know that, you know, that staff is not perfect. Paying, paying, paying some trouble, parking.
Agreed.
True.
Yeah, all true.
All true.
Because, yeah.
I mean, the.
We're going to start school and home.
Nothing different. No, I'm already right there with you, Mary, that we need to figure out a message of what's our plan.
And if we want to put through anything at town meeting that has a large parking component, we as a committee, I think, will need to look at every option of reducing the total number of parking spaces, because if we come to town meeting with 250 additional spaces, it's, it's going to be very difficult, very difficult. It's my personal opinion.
No, I agree with you, without, without the funding. Transportation alternatives.
Every option under the sun.
And we suggested we put this up to the kids, because they'll solve the problem.
There you go, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, right, yeah. Like, getting students involved, and, and.
Okay, no, that's.
I don't know how the, the carpool thing worked out a couple weeks ago, but, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's, those are cultural changes that are not going to happen by the first day of school, it's a town, they're so, so.
No, no way, no way. All right, so we got a plan, I think?
We'll, we'll do a little more work, maybe, is it a little more specific and detailed for?
I think we got to do a reasonable amount of work, and, but, you know, there's limitations, and, you know, we.
I'm happy to try.
For everyone to understand what, what they are and so forth, I think, I think we've got to schedule a meeting or two and get some more details.
We're going to try, so.
You'll clarify what?
Yeah, no, that's right.
Laurie's probably going to get a call on my way home, but other than that, we've got to, what are we?
I might have sleep tonight.
Okay, I think we've.
I think we've exhausted that one.
Out as well as we could have done on this.
We have somewhat of a direction moving forward.
Yeah, I, it, it's, it just has gotten that much more complicated, you know, in the last.
And I think we should be.
Two or three weeks, and I don't think anyone really anticipated that.
Right, correct.
And I think that's, depending on what happens next, that's the kind of, that needs to get out.
Exactly, that's right.
Because that will, it's having an impact on me today.
No question.
Clearly, you guys are feeling very different than a couple of weeks ago, where we might find 50 spots off in a corner somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Bob, before, before we leave this, just one quick question, John, for you, what's the explanation that'll go out from your office and Laurie's in regard to why the, the... solutions we considered as potential temporary ones were not acceptable? What was the central reason?
Uh, there's the drainage, the surface impact and potential impact to the water conservancy district.
Yeah, I think the the water supply is the basic.
Thank you, okay, that sounds pretty remarkable.
This is kind of what I was getting at in terms of not just the specifics of the number of parking spaces, but we got incredibly educated, and we are not doing that for you right now.
That's right.
And so I think if we can be patient in the next meeting and arm you with basically what we learned a little better, like, you know, synthesize down after a couple more meetings, like, here's what we learned, and this is why we got to this place. Because I think everybody needs the same information to be able to go out and answer questions, that there will be, yeah, right.
Yeah, just feeling a little embarrassed too, that we got a campus advisory committee for that month and no more such.
Yeah, I don't think I'm that discouraged yet. I I might have been last week, but I'm not that discouraged. I think we just got to step back and learn more, so we can figure out how the options all play out and just what's involved with them all. It's just more complicated than we anticipated. I don't think it's impossible, though, to get there, so it really, more than ever now, though, it has to be a big picture view. That part is very clear. And we may have to get creative of as to what the priorities are and relook at our original thoughts as to how we can accomplish them.
I just want, are there people from the school building community that might be useful in this conversation?
Probably, they know the campus.
Yeah.
All the permitting for it.
And they've went through a whole lot, so.
That may be.
You probably be the person that would know, right, the best candidate.
There's definitely information that is helpful. There's not really knowledge to, you know, to see what the water's.
Although this is really about water, basically.
It really is about water. The only oversight the town has is over the the water conservancy. So the rest is regional land, but the water trumps everything.
But the building had to go through all the same stuff, yeah, because it's in the water conservancy district. So I'm just saying, there might be, you know, maybe it's talking to Stan or something on the committee of just kind of. Not, not, you know, just don't want to rear on the wheel and don't have to.
All right, I think we've come to a point where we can go forward with something else. So next, Joanna, do you want to talk about the evaluation?
Yeah, this is, this is fairly straightforward. Those two links I I sent in are what you need. One is the rubric, and there is on the second page, I think, I'm going to look through here, of the rubric, it might be the other one, the guide to how to fill it out. Sorry, let me just make sure I have the right one. It might be the evaluation form, if you go to the.
No, it is the rubric.
Is it in the rubric? In terms of how you fill out the form.
Yeah, I think it's on page eight.
It was actually the last page, isn't it?
It's close to the last page, yeah.
Of the actual evaluation. So if you, it's at the end of it, so after the evaluation form you're gonna fill out. Good place to put it, after you've done it, how to do it, right.
Yeah, that's right, you get to the evaluation.
This this helps you, and basically you use your rubric to go through and do your evaluation. And so I'm not going to read any of this to you, but if you have questions, you obviously can ask me, but the only, the the timeline that Heather put together has you all each doing, and we'll have to get in touch with, it's Dan and Stan who will do it, and Melissa. Right. Court and Christine, you don't have to do one. So I'll get this to them. By June fifth, you're to get them to me, and I will do the summative from those. So according to the schedule, you sent out. I sent that out to everybody, everybody, right? And I think Lori sent her our, you sent your own.
I'm almost on track with the schedule, yeah.
But you're 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 also, you've reached out about meeting, so the onus is on us individually with Lori to make sure you meet before you do yours.
I think I'm almost on it.
I have a feeling that's why I got me that schedule. And then the survey is just a different piece that I haven't done before, but according to the schedule, will be available soon.
Yeah, the survey closes tomorrow. I checked the count over the weekend, almost a hundred teachers have responded, so we'll see. I send them a reminder Saturday, so we'll see.
Great.
But we have by tomorrow.
Great. So so I assume we'll get that for our review and stuff.
Yeah, once it's done, we'll just export it out of Survey Monkey and Forty Two.
That's good, right, another piece of information. And you should you should be able to download this document and do it online. If it didn't work in the link, I'll send it to you separately.
Okay, great.
Because I I have it so that you can, but, and I think that's that's it, as long as you meet with Lori and you, we get our surveys go through and you guys can get those. I know, Mary, you might have time issue with this.
Should we do this at the meeting on the twelfth?
The evaluation will be at the end of the month, meeting twenty-sixth, or the the summative presentation.
So why do you get so much time?
Because it takes a lot of time. I gave her a lot of time to put it all together. I actually, I mean, I can have a little less time, but it does, it takes, yeah, it's considerable to compile, to take seven and make them one.
No, I'm meeting one in a later, yeah, so I will try to get it done very soon after. If it's not done early, it's going to be done late, so.
Okay, well, that's that's profound. All right, so I'm trying to be quick and efficient, but I have a feeling now that I'm looking, the link might not allow you to work with it, fill it out online. So I will tomorrow also follow up with this actual forms, just send the email and prevent Dan and Melissa. And that should, if you have problems or questions, just ask me and comment.
Yep. And the school committee meeting dates, you quite a bit of work on that, right?
Sure, so in this, I, this is my sort of tweet proposal on the school committee meeting dates for next year. It mostly affects, it has bigger effect on the car lot members in terms of a few more joint than CPS, just to be realistic about what we've done last year, last couple of years, but also trying to keep, you know, some of the CPS separate and to try and be more disciplined about separating it out. So what I did here is, well, two, two things, those are the two dates for August and July that works best for most, if not all. We got all in August, maybe we don't have one or two in July.
What time is July?
Oh, that's a good point. I was probably, I was thinking we'd do the same thing, sort of five, but if people have work and it makes it harder, we can do our usual six-thirty, ten. If you will feel, Mary.
Is that a workshop, or is that just a regular meeting?
Yeah, just if we have some business we've got to get done.
Yeah.
Right, to, yeah.
It could finally be. It would be really based on what has to get done, I know.
Right. It would set up, it may be an if necessary next to it, I mean, really, if we have to get some stuff done.
Yeah, I guess it would.
It would be short, hopefully, maybe not, I can't guarantee it's short, maybe necessary.
And there was the hope that one or two of these joints meeting might turn out to be a concrete one.
Uh, yeah.
For the benefit of.
I basically changed, yeah, four, so that you scheduled them as such, so. Because we did a lot of basically making this car lot people come to CPS, the ones that they didn't originally have on their date on their calendar, so it was a little harder, and then they had to reschedule some.
So so you've got a, you have a bunch of March and April covered, Ellen, right? And then only one in May and one in June, and it felt like we should be adding one there, whether April twenty-third, like towards the end of the year. I feel like we.
Well, I was, I was feeling that we do, so. I mean, we can, I I was trying to, I mean, we have in the past done CPS, you know, all improvement plans. Right, because we do all the improvement plans and handbooks and all that, that takes a while for CPS, you guys don't really do that. And that's really why, to try it.
I'm sure we're not going to have another one yet.
Well, you're the one from car lots saying, I have to be a both, but it just makes more of you guys.
No, I feel like I was saying, like, I can't plan this far ahead, but, you know.
Better to have it on your calendar and not be.
The week before saying, what do you mean you can't come to a meeting?
Well, here's my worry, if we put it in as joint, I don't think we'll try to not be joint. I think it'll be like, oh, we have a joint, and we'll just throw them all in. But I'm, I'm, I mean, you guys, if you're, if you're okay with throwing down another one in the spring, or.
I don't want to say that now, because I don't know, that's a great day too.
I would also just.
I'm the one that doesn't make it after I have to do one.
Not to throw in a question before we answer that one, but because it could relate. One of our issues, this year, one of the things we talked about was the fact that having our last meeting in June after school ends is hard on a lot of people. Would we want that last June one to be a week earlier and just have them, you know, two weeks in a row, but do it the eighteenth instead of the twenty-fifth?
That's probably not a, that's probably a good expectation.
And then at least we're not keeping, you know, preschools and, and everybody after school's out.
Yeah.
It also means that you can do some high school recognitions, you might not be able to do all of them.
Right, yeah. I don't remember, but. It was scheduled last year, earlier than that, but I'm assuming, yeah, so the eighteen.
So we're gonna change the what, the twenty-fifth to the eighteen? And then, Mary, is that the last?
So that doesn't answer the question of whether we want it, I would have been joint, but it was a joint. Okay, K A, June thirteenth is the last day of school, no, snow days.
So that's not really going to do that.
Graduation would be.
Well, there's a couple of snow days, don't we?
Right, assuming we'll have a huge snow day.
You're gonna be talking about that, I'm bringing you some ideas.
Oh. So. Okay. So change to. What if we make June eleventh joint?
Switch those two? Or?
Oh. Like June eleventh joint and have a potential joint on only eighteenth, and then, I don't know, cancel it, but. Or go to the. Add a joint on the first week of June and just go earlier, I don't know.
Yeah, we have one May twenty-eighth.
Right.
Yeah, I propose to suggest June eleventh a joint and keep the eighteen to the twenty-fifth and decide if it's necessary.
Because June eleventh would get us, if there's no snow days, then we're in before the end of school, isn't it?
Right, so let's do joint on the eleventh. And then the question is, I guess, do you still have another one, and if so, is it joint or CPS?
You mean the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna need the eighteen.
There's so much stuff.
Right, I know, there's a lot.
We got, we got, we got some.
It's out there. So the question is, is it CPS or joint, though?
Right. The last one should be joint. Well, oh, you're saying and and the eleventh be joint?
And the eleventh be joint, though.
Oh, well, I propose.
Because that'll be your end of year thing, mostly, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we make both the eleventh and the eighteenth both join? If we get, as we get closer, if we realize we don't need both joined, we can take, you know, give you guys the night off for one of those, but then at least we have that there as the option.
But I will tell you, May fourteenth is the only day to do K A improvement plans or handbooks. That seems early to me.
It is. Yeah.
So, that's right.
Then we could even, if both of those are joined, one of them, we could, you know, the eleventh, we could carve out as, okay, we're gonna do, cover joint things for the first hour and keep it short for these guys, and then we go into all the CPS handbooks or improvement plans or maybe, I don't know. I just think to Mary's point about better to have it on the calendar and know in advance, that maybe we make them both joint for now.
So we have a June eleventh joint and we're keeping a twenty-fifth joint?
Eighteenth.
To the eighteen.
Yep.
The October ninth, the joint with the, is that the, so that's with the Congress FinCon?
Yeah, that's what we.
Is that one that they, so that's going to be like a pre-town meeting kind of thing?
Yeah, so they're working on this, this was sort of to get a holding place there. They're working on a schedule simultaneously, so I think we're going to be able to. There's a definite effort to make our schedules work better than they did last year, so we're not tripping on each other's dates, so.
So we'll have a meeting two weeks before then and two weeks after, but I guess October ninth is not, we wish a plan to meet with the FinCon and then like after.
I actually think they're gonna work around to that date. I think that might be when we need to bring you information in preparation for a FinCon meeting.
So this year it was on the tenth, and I think we met before it.
Yeah, so I've been really stressing that I want to bring information to all of you before the finance committee sees it. So I think that will be what we talk about Thursday.
Okay. Another question, this year we held one in Boston, and we've talked about wanting to do that again next year. I know we can't necessarily say right now, okay, this is going to be the day for Boston, so we're going to coordinate with other people to make that happen, but.
I would love the twenty-third, because I have to be in Boston that day. No, but I might, I might not make it out here.
I I was actually going to say, last, this past year we did it the second meeting in October, and it worked well in terms of, I'm just trying to make you happy, Mary.
Also, why does your purpose of being in Boston, Metco?
Um, just really to be more welcoming and accessible to our Boston families.
Oh, I see.
So do one in Boston, so that.
We also probably work with the new Metco director to see if that also works, right?
Right, to see if that makes it work.
Because Erin really ran that.
Right.
Definitely.
Yeah, definitely. Right, so I, I mean, I don't think we should, you know, put it in pen here now, but at least last year when we were planning when to do it, late October worked because of, you know, just within all of the other schedules, it was, it was a time that we didn't necessarily have to be here. But I just wanted to keep it on the radar as something to to look at.
And I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench, but one thought, I almost wonder if it's a forum in Boston with those families, because one of the challenges we had with planning the agenda was what could we, what could we do in Boston that we maybe wanted to be accessible to the Congress committee? So maybe it's a forum, I don't know, I almost wonder if we need to talk about.
True, because.
Completely agree with wanting to be accessible.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something a little bit different.
A little bit different, because it's true, the part that we did that was kind of town hall forum-esque had lots of people.
Yeah.
And as soon as we wrapped that up and went on to our meeting items, everybody left, as they, you know, understandably would. So, yeah, you're right, maybe it's just a.
There's something to talk about, that that going into Boston is really important.
Right, exactly.
Something we got to learn.
It's a question of what we do today. It's a good question.
Christine, can you make the October ninth thing?
Love it. So as, as.
I think it's not. At least I gotta go back to talk to my committee about it. Maybe the mosquito was right after all.
So the edits to this are, some of the assignments were, eleventh meeting is joint, and the second June meeting is the eighteenth?
Yep.
Yes. So we have a motion for this calendar heading, oh, oh, sorry, we're not going on.
Well, one, one more thing. I think Heather, at the July twenty-fourth meeting, what time is that, going to six-thirty?
Can people do five o'clock, do they want to, do they want to?
It seems like nicer to do it early in the summer.
Yep, works for you.
Yeah, my influence will be here.
Should we make it like eight AM to five AM?
That'd be great.
Okay, great.
All right, to five o'clock.
Hopefully, they don't watch this on TV.
No, they don't, they're, they're English, they're just in. Oh, just point of note, Joanna and I talked a bit about the vacation stuff, and I'm going to try to manage differently, so I'm not spending my vacations prepping, see how it comes.
You could, right, so trying to move the.
Yeah, we could solve it, so we're seeing if we can solve it from the other side.
Okay, good, so we're gonna try harder.
I'll try harder before I.
We're cutting out over the long weekend.
So. It's still on the radar, we're just.
We don't need to go into another update of the C C, just parking, right? We'll continue to action items, action items, and we've got a vote scheduled.
I would entertain a motion that the Congress School Committee vote to approve the CMS Wind Ensemble New York City Performance Trip on April twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, with the condition that we receive a signed district liability insurance waiver from all participants.
So, oop.
Second?
Second. Second.
Question?
Yes, any discussion, yes.
Would it be typical that you get more detail on this trip before they head to New York? It looks like things are pretty inclusive at present time. Would they normally spell out where they're gonna be, where they're gonna go? Plus their date?
Not to us.
No, not to us.
The itinerary itself, you mean? Yeah, we certainly have that, but it doesn't normally come to the committee.
No, I'm not suggesting it come here.
The school offices would maintain that, the principal really doesn't see that.
Well, this is a pretty detailed itinerary. In New York?
It looks like a bunch of choices and a lot of possibilities.
So I know this is Concord, but all these stuff.
No, because the idea is we're giving them permission to finalize a trip. We don't approve this, they can't, they can't get to the next step.
So I think the answer is yes, we're gonna see more, somebody.
Or we might not, but their ability to do it, yeah.
See more of the details, that's all.
Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So next, looking for a motion to vote to approve the three-year contract for the Bus Drivers Association.
So moved, doing more detail than others.
For both, right?
For both committees.
Second for both?
Any discussion?
Just thank you for the time to negotiate that.
Absolutely, good job, nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye for both?
For both. Oh, all those in favor for Concord, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next, to vote on the calendar we just discussed, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the calendar with the edits discussed, which were to add start time of 5 o'clock to July 24th, to make June 11th joint and to switch the last meeting from the 25th to June 18th, keeping it joint.
For both?
Those were the, for both, those were the only edits, right? I move that for both.
Second?
For both?
I'm voting for both, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor for both?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, all those in favor for the region.
For the region, you just do them separately.
Okay, all those in favor for the region?
Aye.
And all those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Thank you. Want to say this one?
So next item is to vote on a request to pay for unused administrative vacation time. And this came about because totally unexpected factors caused the leadership team to be without two key administrators for an extended period of time. And looking at the likelihood of many more vacation days being taken by John Flaherty, we just felt that, you know, we needed to provide more support in the central office by bringing this to a vote. So the request is a payment to be made up to 15 days of a total of 23 vacation days that John Flaherty still has. And this would clearly help tremendously in terms of keeping the office running smoothly. And again, in view of the fact we have a new director of finance and operations coming in, this would obviously improve that whole process. And it just operationally makes perfect sense. Joanna, do you wanna add something?
I don't know, Lori wants to add, I think. Yeah, I, the intention was that John would take all of these days way back when he announced he was leaving. That was the plan. We have a number of just unpredictable things happen, so we were down two full-time administrators in the central office. And frankly, the thought of John leaving for this entire 23 days between the middle of May and June 30th was, had me a little panic stricken, so. I'm the last person who thought I'd be requesting that you pay anyone vacation days in this district. Certainly not this spring. But I think if we can have some wiggle room to allow John to be here when we need him here and take as many of the days as he possibly can, it would allow us to keep the day-to-day functions operational and keep your superintendent sane. There's a personal plea on this one, so.
And that is a top priority of ours.
Yeah, there's money, you know, we've saved money because some of the unexpected changes had savings attached. And this is a request for up to the 15 days, not necessarily all 15, and they'll certainly use eight of the 23, so. The goal is to just take the edge off and get us through to the end of school.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, no, thank you for being willing. There was a day I closed the door instead of crying, Uncle, how many days will you stay?
To me, this is clearly, yeah. This is extenuating circumstances.
It really is. Extraordinary circumstances.
I could not see not giving you this support. I feel like we absolutely have to.
And just for public notice, I think if we didn't replace any of these absences by bringing in long-term replacements, we've just been managing and grabbing more and more of the need of what needs to be done. So you could have been paying for long-term administrative coverage at least, you know, in two different situations that we've just not even addressed. So it's really a fairly fiscally conservative way to get through what's been extraordinarily unpredictable, so.
Definitely.
So for those of you who remember, we have a policy as of last year.
Correct.
The school committee wants to approve vacation payouts to administrators specifically. So the last, the cost associated is up to the $13,000.
Right.
Depending on.
Depending on how many days.
We thought phrasing it as a not to exceed 15 days, cap it and allow you guys to know what the numbers were.
Yep. Thank you.
I think there'll be much more than easing the load, rather. I think, John, you bring some knowledge and capacity that nobody else can bring to help us in the final weeks of fiscal year. I would echo what Heather said, this is an exceptional set of circumstances. I think thanks to you is in order. And I think it's important the committee expressed to the public that we don't want this misunderstood. I think, John, you'd first agree, the people who report to you have been extraordinary. The people who report to you, Lori, have been extraordinary. Everybody's been putting extra oars in the water lately. And yet what we can do with this move is probably what we can't do in any other way to close out this year properly.
Thank you, well put.
My intention in accord is that we're all gonna use our vacation time and have our our social, emotional wellbeing be as charitable as asked and want the kids. This may in June be.
I'll catch them.
Yeah.
We're not too worried about that.
Don't run in.
Well, I would move that both the Concord Carlisle School Committee and School Committee approve payment to Deputy Superintendent John Flaherty of up to 15 days of vacation time for this year in order to fill in the gaps that need to be filled. I move that for both.
Second for both?
Move what's up? So for the regional school committee, looking for a vote?
I have to say all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And?
The Concord School Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much, John.
Don't thank you all very much, John.
Thank you all, that's just a huge piece of support.
And thank you both for all that you've been doing to keep all the oars in the water and keep the vote running smoothly, shorthanded, much appreciated.
So can I vote with the Concord Carlisle School Committee to accept the donation of public with the chair of the trustees of town donations for the donation of $1,200 to the high school in accordance for the 1878 quest of cyberstall?
Wow, who is that? Very cool.
Annual, annual event.
That's great.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So I'll entertain a motion for the Concord School Committee to vote to accept an anonymous donation to the Concord Mills School in the amount of $100.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Thanks to whoever it is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And we can have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn both committees.
Second?
For?
Vote.
All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye. All those for the region?
Aye.